Half a day, the Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land and Justice is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, January 8, 2020. The time is 5:07 PM. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Tuesday, December 31, and Monday, January 6, 2020. Tuesday, December, uh, the notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, December 31, 2019, and Monday, January 6, 2020. We have three agenda items today that will be heard. There are three bills: Bill Number 102-35 LS, sponsored by Senator Mary Torres; Bill Number 162-35 COR, also sponsored by Senator Mary Torres; and Bill Number 123-35 LS, sponsored by Senator Luis Borja Munya. I'd like to thank my colleagues who are here today with us, beginning with our Legislative Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton; Senator Mary Camacho Torres; Senator Luis Borja Munya; and Senator Telo Taitukui. Thank you, colleagues. So we begin first with the first agenda item, which is Bill Number 102-35 LS. I will allow the sponsor to introduce the bill, and all those who've signed up to testify on Bill Number 102-35 LS, please have a seat at the table. All right, so we'll hear from the sponsor. Thank you, Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number 102-35 LS is an act to add a new Chapter 53 to Title VII of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of civil remedies for victims of intentional or threatened disclosure of intimate images, and to further citing this act as the Guam Uniform Civil Remedies for Unauthorized Disclosure of Intimate Images. Essentially, this bill is in addition to the civil special proceedings of Title VII of Guam Code Annotated. Madam Chair, Bill 102 simply brings balance to a matter this body criminalized years ago, as introduced as measure provides civil recourse against an increasingly common form of abuse, which is the disclosure of intimate images without consent. According to a recent study published by the American Psychological Association, one in 12 individuals reported at least one instance of non-consensual pornography victimization in their lifetime. Moreover, data from the 26, from 2016 shows that one in four high school students on Guam have been exposed to sexting. And yet, despite the prevalence of this harm, our laws do not provide civil remedies for victims of unauthorized disclosure. While Public Law 33-171 criminalized the revenge pornography, in 2016, Guam still lacks a statutory mechanism for the victims to receive compensation for what they've endured. This lack of a specific remedy is significant, Madam Chair, because there is clear financial cost to victimization. And while we can't put a price on depression, or anxiety, or post-traumatic stress, we do know that unemployment, or expulsion, relocation expenses, as well as the cost of therapy and psychological support, are financial consequences of being a victim. In other words, while criminalization is an important deterrent, it is deeply inadequate on its own. In fact, the need for civil recourse was acknowledged during the public hearing of Public Law 33-171 back in 2016. When asked by the committee if civil litigation should be proposed in addition to criminalization, the chief of police at the time, J.I. Cruz, stressed that both should work in tandem with each other so that victims' rights are protected on both sides of the House. And this testimony can be found in the committee report on page 4. So while Chief Cruz acknowledged that the Guam Police Department would not necessarily be involved in civil matters, he concluded that if the intent is to hold people accountable, from our perspective as a police department, it would be better. So as a result, Bill Number 102-35 enables victims whose intimate images are shared without their consent to recover up to $10,000 or an amount equal to the economic and non-economic damages caused by disclosure of the images, whichever is greater. The measure also allows the court to award reasonable attorney's fees and costs, addressing concerns regarding the high cost of litigation. A prevailing plaintiff may also recover punitive damages, as well as any monetary gain made by the defendant from the disclosure of the images. And perhaps more importantly, the bill outlines procedures that allow victims to protect their identity in court proceedings, eliminating the fear of further notoriety, which often deters them from pursuing legal remedies. Madam Chair, to ensure this act survives constitutional challenge, this measure was carefully drafted by the Uniform Law Commission, and as a result, the act provides comprehensive, clear, and constitutionally sound language. In recent news, there have been First Amendment defense claims against some state revenge porn laws for being too broad. That is why this act applies only to sensitive content created or obtained under circumstances in which the individual had a reasonable expectation of privacy. As we all know, many state and federal laws protect the right of individuals to keep certain private information out of the public eye, such as our medical records, or our social security numbers, educational records, genetic information, biometric data, et cetera. This act simply recognizes that sexually explicit imagery is a form of private information deserving of similar protection. In addition, I chose this model because so much of this form of abuse is carried out electronically through internet websites and social media, email or text messages, which can make it an interstate problem best suited for treatment by a uniform state law. In closing, Madam Chair, while we can't undo or erase the suffering endured by victims of abuse, it is my hope that this bill provides a first step towards helping victims fight back and correct these injustices. And I thank the people who have expressed their interest and who have encouraged me to introduce such legislation. Many times, appearing before the legislature and showing your support oftentimes exposes you to the pain that you yourself have suffered, and as a result, some of those people unfortunately did chose not to be here this evening. But we do understand their plight. We are trying to accommodate remedies civilly that they can have some comfort knowing that there is a way for them to fight back and to get something for their efforts in fighting back. And I hope that my colleagues would join me in supporting this measure as well.
Thank you, Senator Torres. I'd like to note for the record that the committee has, prior to the hearing, invited the testimony or input of the Attorney General of Guam, the judiciary of Guam, the Guam Police Department, Guam Child Protective Services, the Victims Advocates reaching out, the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault, the Guam Public Defender Services Corporation, the Guam Bar Association, and other stakeholders. We've also received a fiscal note, which indicates that the bill is administrative in nature, and they predict no fiscal impact. The committee has also received testimony from the National Uniform Law Commission in support of Bill 102, and their testimony very concisely outlines what the bill, that this bill is consistent with the uniform law that they had come up with, and that, and it outlines very concisely what it will do. And if I could just read a portion of their testimony into the record. It says, "This Uniform Act addresses the alarming issue of non-consensual pornography. It provides civil remedies to victims who learn that their private intimate images have been distributed without consent and for no legitimate purposes. The Uniform Act creates a cause of action for the unauthorized disclosure of an intimate image when there is," and this is, there are seven items. One, an intentional disclosure or threat to disclose. Two, a private. Three, intimate image. Four, of an identifiable individual. Five, without the consent of the depicted individual. Six, by a person who has the requisite awareness that," and here we go, A, B, C. A, the depicted individual did not consent to the disclosure. B, the intimate image was private. And C, the depicted individual was identifiable. And seven, the disclosure harms the depicted individual. So I want to thank the sponsor of the bill for working with the National Uniform Law Commission, and they give the sponsor credit for her leadership on this important issue, and respectfully request the support of Bill Number 102 by the Guam Legislature. We've also received testimony or input from the legislature, the Guam Legislature's Legal Bureau, and I want to thank the Legislature's Legal Bureau for their input. And they have pointed out in a couple places where the language in the bill that has been introduced on Guam is not exactly consistent with the uniform law, and we will resolve those questions that have been raised by the Legal Bureau prior to reporting the bill out. So again, I'd like to ask if my colleagues have any other questions or comments that they'd like to add on this bill? All right. Senator Torres, if you would like to close.
The only, the only point I want to bring up too, in case people are doing a compare and contrast with Title VII, is that the, some of the definitions contained in this uniform bill are more than what is contained in the reference to the definitions of sexual assault. And so, we did a reconciliation also to determine if there had to be an exact mirroring of definitions in one, one part of the statute with this. And the answer that we got from our research, including what is, what is happening in other jurisdictions, and also with the Uniform Law Commission, is that it doesn't have to be an exact word for word. So if, if, you know, someone should go through that, that, and come up with that same conclusion, that didn't escape our attention, and we have in fact come to a consensus that the bill as drafted, with regard to the definition, is more than sufficient and not in, not contradictory to any other part of the statute.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Torres, would you also clarify, if you could, that the bill is allowing for a civil, to, for someone to seek civil remedy even without a conviction? Or is a conviction required? Not required.
There has to be a, um, there has to be clearly a case, a determination that, that that crime has in fact been committed. So I don't, I have to verify if there, if there is a requirement for that. But there has to be a demonstration, I believe, civilly. Because oftentimes, we know that the criminal acts and the civil acts are separate. They're not, they're not, they don't necessarily depend on one or the other. But there is a test in every civil action, either the standard is by a preponderance of evidence. I will have to be, I will have to get back to you exactly, but in my understanding, no, there doesn't, it isn't required to have a criminal conviction for a civil action to be filed.
All right. Thank you very much. There being no other people to give testimony today, we are, we will consider Bill Number 102-35 LS considered heard. We will move on to the second item on our agenda, which is Bill Number 162-35 COR, also sponsored by Senator Mary Camacho Torres, and I will ask the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number 162-35 COR is an act to amend Section 4303 of Chapter 4, Title 19, Guam Code Annotated, relative to terminating the parent-child relationship of a parent who is found by clear and convincing evidence to have committed against the other parent an act of sexual assault as defined in 9 GCA Section 25.10A9, resulting in the conception of a child. Madam Chair, Bill 162 has a simple purpose, and that is to close the gap in our law that allows rapists to exercise parental rights over the children of their victims. It closes this gap by permitting the victim to petition the court for termination of the parent-child relationship if the other parent is found by clear and convincing evidence to have committed sexual assault resulting in the conception of a child. While Guam law specifically permits termination of parental rights in cases of abandonment, neglect, or parent's mental deficiency, all other grounds for petitions are based on whether the court finds the termination in the best interests of the parent and child. In other words, right now, with the way our law is written, a rapist is permitted to pursue custody or visitation rights of their biological offspring so long as they are not deemed an unfit parent. This means, Madam Chair, that victims of sexual assault on Guam may be forced to co-parent with their rapist or coerced into not reporting or assisting in prosecution. The continued interaction with the perpetrator of abuse can have traumatic psychological effects on a victim, making recovery more difficult and negatively affecting the victim's ability to parent and to provide within the best interests of the child. Additionally, a perpetrator may use the threat of pursuing parental rights and responsibilities to harass, intimidate, or manipulate the victim. And with Guam at the second highest number of sexual assaults per capita, and local news reports affirming the presence of rape-related pregnancies on Guam, we believe that clear statutory language is essential to ensuring rape victims are protected from their attackers. So to address this concern, Bill 162 allows a parent to petition the court for termination of the parent-child relationship if the other parent is found by clear and convincing evidence to have committed sexual assault resulting in the conception of a child. This act does not require a criminal conviction to terminate parental rights. According to a report conducted by the National Institute of Justice, less than 20% of adult women who were raped report such incidences to law enforcement. And of the 37% of rapes that go on to be prosecuted, less than half of these have resulted in convictions. As a result, Bill 162 would require clear and convincing evidence of rape as determined by a court, rather than a conviction, which is the standard used in 25 states to terminate the parental rights of rapists. This standard satisfies due process for allegations. In 1982, the U.S. Supreme Court established that clear and convincing was sufficient regarding termination or restriction of parental rights in the case of Santowski versus Kramer. Consequently, the clear and convincing evidence standard is the most common standard for termination of parental rights among the 50 states, territories, and the District of Columbia. For, for instance, clear and convincing evidence is a standard used in Guam in cases of alleged abandonment and abuse. Finally, under this measure, the court may still order the child's natural parent to pay child support, regardless of the termination of parent-child relationships. I also want to note that, for the record, that our office will be offering to make an amendment to Section 4212, entitled Hearing Procedure. While this bill is explicit about whether the, where the clear and convincing standard applies, I also wanted to add language to the paragraph on Hearing Procedure, noting in cases where a petition is filed under Section 4303B5, which is a section we're adding, that the standard is clear and convincing, and I'm just doing this to be consistent. I also want to note for the record that some states have also written into their statutes that if there is a criminal conviction, the grounds for termination is then based on a lower standard, a preponderance of evidence, which is Guam's current standard with regards to grounds for petition. And so, we'll also maybe reach out to the Attorney General's Office, as they are not here, and get their feedback on whether, whether it, you know, we should be required to allow for, allow for a lower standard of preponderance of evidence when there is a conviction, or an outright termination of parental rights when there is a conviction of rape. And the other point that I want to make as a possible amendment is, and I'll allow the Public Defender Service Corporation to provide their testimony, but in, in considering their testimony before today's hearing, we have also determined that there is probably a need to make a distinction between forcible rape and statutory rape, and, and that we would probably, in this bill, also provide an exception and create a rebuttable presumption where the, the best interests of the child will be determined by a court. So I think it's, it's necessary when you're talking about rape, and oftentimes statutory rape, you know, there's a determination about whether it's consensual or forcible. That, that shouldn't fall into this, this direct read. So we will make some mention and, and distinguish between the two in this. So that is, that is another amendment, but I will allow the testimony to be heard, and then, you know, further discussion on that issue to be discussed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Torres. So prior to the hearing, the committee requested the input of the Attorney General of Guam, the judiciary of Guam, the Guam Police Department, Child Protective Services, Victims Advocates reaching out, the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault, the Guam Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Bar Association, and other stakeholders. We've received review from the Legislative Legal Bureau, and we've received a fiscal note from BB Mar, which indicates that the proposed amendments are administrative in nature and would not fiscally impact the appropriations for FY 2019. Prior to the hearing, we received testimony in support of the bill from the Public Defender Service Corporation and Attorney John Wiesenberger. That testimony's been provided to the panel, but we will now accept testimony from those who are here today. And Attorney Stephen Hattori, thank you for being here, and you may proceed whenever you are ready.
Good evening, and first, thanks for having the hearing after 5 o'clock. So I was able to finish my regular work and, and come down and address these honorable senators. Good evening, Chairperson Turahi, members of the committees. I am currently the Director of the Public Defender Service Corporation. As you are aware, our office, we represent individuals charged with, with criminal offenses in the territory. Termination of a sexual assailant's parental rights when the assault results in pregnancy will permit the mother and child to proceed with their lives without the burden of dealing with a criminal who by chance happens to be the biological father of that child. This is a policy decision that many of the states in the Union have implemented. In some jurisdictions, it operates automatically upon conviction. So the bill that's being proposed would require a separate civil proceeding. And in cases where there's a criminal conviction for first, or second, or third degree criminal sexual conduct, other jurisdictions would just make it automatic part of the criminal judgment. When they're convicted, they'll say, "Your parental rights are terminated." And that might be a step that could be added to alleviate any additional stress, you know, placed on the mother and the child. So that's something that the legislature may want to consider. In cases where there's a conviction, that it happened automatically through the judgment in the, in the criminal matter. In other jurisdictions, you know, there, it requires a separate proceeding, which is proposed here, where either a conviction or by a showing by clear and convincing evidence is sufficient to terminate an offender's parental rights. It's a simple concept that makes for great policy. And however, while it seems easy enough to understand, and as it can be applied, one can see that exceptions may be warranted. For example, I, you know, the case that we brought up was, say you had a 16-year-old teenage daughter, and then she had like a 15-year-old boyfriend, and then she got pregnant, and then they decided to keep the kids. It's completely consensual, even though legally you're unable to consent if you're 16, under 16 years old. And so, in those, and we call those statutory rape cases. In those type of cases, either parent could actually terminate the, the offending parent's parental rights. So what we were proposing is that there be some language in there that gives the judges the ability to judge really, and gives them the discretion to say whether or not it's in the best interests of the child. I know that the preamble to the bill suggests that identifies that one case where there was a 38-year-old who impregnated an 11-year-old, but I think you'll find that there are far more statutory rape children out there than there are forcible rape children. In fact, I think in the last two years, I've actually had a couple, you know, a couple cases where there were adult males, they impregnated a 14 or 15-year-old girl, but somehow the family accepted them, and they were supporting the child. And I mean, eventually, they are, they are doing time, they're serving the punishment, but the, nobody wants to terminate their parental rights. And they were actually involved in raising the children. And I think this happens far more than the people realize. And, and these are just cases that ended up in the criminal system. There are many more cases, I'm sure. One year, I think there was a, the first New Year's Eve baby was born to someone who was under 16, and I'm sure that the father of that child was actively involved in raising that, that baby. This bill, as written, would authorize either the, you know, if you're an adult, then you could move yourself. But oftentimes, parents of teenage children who are unhappy with this Romeo-Juliet relationship might try to use the law to terminate the parental rights of the, of the offending parent. So, but I think if we give the trial judges, you know, and they're trained, they, you guys confirm them, they, they're really the wisest people in the courtroom, right? They, they're elected to eight-year terms or seven-year terms, so they don't have to worry about public pressure. And they can base their rulings based on their training and all the evidence that's presented to them, and they can determine whether or not, you know, whether it's in the best interests of the child to terminate the parental rights of, of a parent, you know, in those narrow statutory rape cases. I mean, I don't, I think generally, the bill would, might not be necessary because most child judges would probably terminate a parental, the parental rights of a rapist in any event, except for this narrow case where it's the, it's really the, the child of two teenagers involved in a Romeo-Juliet statutory rape case. And so that's the, the only exception that we think should, needs to be made. I mean, we're in support of the bill. We, we think that it will probably help, you know, victims and the families move on after, after a really terrible crime. And so, with those exceptions that we, amendments we proposed, were in support of the measure. And I think one was that, I mean, there's language that they continue to pay child support. Perhaps their language could be added that they also will maintain all their inherent rights. So just because you terminate, the, the child could still get property from the parent, even though their, their parental rights would be terminated, but they'll still have rights of, to inherit. rights of, to inherit property. So I think those are the only two real amendments that we were proposing. I don't have anything to add. If you guys have any questions?
Questions of the panel? Senator Torres?
Mr. Hattori, I just want to, first of all, thank you very much for taking the time and being very supportive on critical measures, and your input is invaluable because you have a lot of the real-world experiences and, and examples of, of what our bills will do and, and how they will affect clients that perhaps come through your, your office. But I think you bring up a very good point in, in terms of the, the pregnancies that result from statutory rape cases versus criminal sexual conduct cases. Oftentimes, there, you have to first distinguish whether the, there was a crime or whether the offender intended to commit a crime when he was committing statutory rape, and perhaps that could be one of the residual results when you have people that decide to co-parent, willingly decide to co-parent, because the sense that no harm was intended and perhaps it was intentional all along, consensual all along, is what I mean. But I think that, that one of the, the concerns that we have, that I had in, in going forward with this measure is, I also am aware of a situation where a 14-year-old girl was impregnated by an older person who was convicted and wanted to, opted instead to seek adoption as an avenue. And because the due process rights afforded to the, the father were exercised, and he did not consent to the, to giving up his parental rights, he was not necessarily deemed an unfit parent, and so this child was denied adoption. And, you know, that's another situation where this type of a, a bill could help, where they, they clearly don't have an avenue in statute to petition this would give them. But I, your concerns about statutory rape, I think are, are, are valid, and, and I believe that, that there is a way that we can insert a rebuttable presumption in here that will allow the courts to weigh what is in the best interest of the child and allow the defendants to, to come up with a, a defense as to why they are in fact fit parents and not worthy of termination of rights. So I also cite to, you know, there's cases also, as you point out, in the Seventh Circuit that address these sorts of issues about the fitness of a parent, whether he's deemed a rapist or not, but the fitness of a parent to co-parent, and some of those case laws, what we're also considering in all the different scenarios and how this law can be, can affect those different types of, of situations. But all your comments certainly will be taken into account. I do want to point out in your, in your testimony, you mentioned, you mentioned wanting to use the definition of sexual assault and, and having it more of a broad definition. Was that part of your testimony?
Yes, I, I think just because of the, just, that way, any act of sexual assault in that chapter would be sufficient rather than sexual penetration, because then you'll, you know, get into a battle on whether or not there was actual penetration in terms of, you know, the pregnancy. And so it would be easier to implement the, the policy if you just establish that there was a sexual assault and not necessarily a sexual penetration.
I, I will consider that and maybe have more discussion with you, because the, the end result here is the, the conception of a child, and I could not see that every definition in here had any applicability to the conception of a child, whereas sexual penetration would absolutely be one of the causes of conception.
Yes, and so, I mean, that might just be the lawyer in me, but that's how a lawyer might try to defend it by saying, you know, there wasn't penetration, it was some other type of sex. And so, and, and then, but I do agree with the senator that if you need some sort of language permitting termination of parental rights in the case of a rapist, otherwise, that's a really hard burden to prove by clear and convincing evidence that a parent is unfit, you know, especially if they have like, they might be a great parent, but you know, still, you shouldn't put the mother of, of a child through, through that, raising a child along with her rapist. So, I mean, I think it, it would probably be more protective of our victims if we, we did include that, that language.
I agree, and I think, I think being on Guam too, just the proximity of this close-knit community heightens the likelihood that that person can continue to harass or interfere with the, the raising of that child if, you know, he didn't have a clear delineation.
And the other added benefit is, I think it increases the amount of federal funds through the stop grant that the territory would be able to access.
Well, that's true.
So the, the Congress passed some bill, kind of like as an incentive for states to pass these type of laws.
Right.
Which I think it might, I don't know if it doubles the amount under the stop grant, but there is a, we would be able to get an increase in stop grants.
Yeah, that was a, an act signed by Obama in 2015, as I recall.
And, and our office, we do protective orders through the stop grant, so, you know, it might help us. And, I mean, even though I didn't provide testimony on your, the earlier measure, we'll submit something in writing, because I also think it will benefit our, our clients in the protective order realm, because you could see how texting, it might not physically harm someone, but if there's, it's an emotional trauma that we should be able to get a protective order stopping someone from doing. And so this, that statute, the proposed bill would specifically allow injunctive relief. And so, you know, that's something that we could use to help our protective order clients get protection, because I can see, you know, usually we have to prove there's some threat of physical harm, or there, or threats or something, but with this particular bill, we would be able to establish that, you know, there's emotional trauma, it's like, basically, you know, invasion of one's privacy, it might do more harm than a, you know, a physical act. And so this will help us, help our clients in the protective order realm as well.
So I, I found the act, it's called the Rape Survivor Child Custody Act of 2015.
Twenty fifteen, yes.
Thank you.
Senator? Okay, thank you. And I'd like to recognize the presence earlier, she came in and I just forgot, my apologies. So Senator Sabina Perez, thank you, Senator, for being here. Did you have any questions on the bill or comments?
Just a question regarding the testimony, and by the way, thank you, Attorney Hattori, for that. I'm just kind of curious about some of the amendments that you suggested regarding termination, automatic termination of parental rights upon conviction. So does parental rights include, just for clarification purposes, does it include not receiving child support?
That's correct, but I think the measure actually says that the offender will still be ordered to pay child support. And so historically, like, some people will try to get out of paying child support by terminating their parental rights, but the child support hearing officers are kind of reluctant to do that if they know that that's why they're, you know, they're pursuing that. So, and many states have included language saying that if your parental rights will be terminated, but you still have that obligation to provide a child support.
Okay, yeah, thank you, thank you so much. That's just one of the, the questions.
And we're just also recommending that they include the right to inherit as well, because I don't know if other states are doing that, but that could be an issue in the future, so the child could still inherit from the assailant's estate.
That's my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez, Senator Torres, I mean, I'm so sorry, Senator? Yeah, Senator Louise Borja Munya?
Yeah, thank you very much. Actually, that was, that was part of my question, the, the opportunity for the, the parent to terminate the relationship of the other parent, would that relieve them of their obligation for child support? That's, that, that really was one of my questions. And then I think for clarification, I just wanted to ask, in, in the case of the Romeo and Juliet, and the parents of the Romeo and Juliet, I, I just wanted to clarify, if they had, what was your recommendation if?
Just that there be a language allowing the, the trial court to determine whether or not it's in the best interest of the child.
Okay, okay.
And usually, those kind of termination actions will be sought by the parents of the, of the, you know, the parents of the mother of the child.
Okay.
Because, you know, obviously, they want to protect their daughter from like an older boyfriend.
Right.
And so the courts can, at least the judges could, you know, look at that situation and, you know, ask the other questions about how he is as a parent, if it's not like a typical forcible rape.
So it'd be determined by the, by the court?
The trial, yeah.
The trial, okay, okay, thank you. That was.
Thank you, Senator Munya. Senator Taitigui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to Attorney Harati for being here. It's, it's very nice to actually have somebody from the Public Defender's Office, and we're hoping the Attorney General would be here too as well, but greatly appreciate your presence and, and the work you've done on this bill. There is a question I have, and what is your position with respect to Bill 162 not requiring criminal conviction of a sexual act in order to terminate parental rights of the parent in question?
I mean, so there are other jurisdictions, you know, most of the jurisdictions, I think, don't require criminal conviction, and the jurisdictions that do require criminal conviction, it's, it's, it's just a lot more difficult to get a criminal conviction than it is to meet a clear and convincing evidence standard. So it's way much, it's a much higher standard, and so, you know, it seems like it would be unfair to put the, you know, the victim through another trial if they've already established beyond a reasonable doubt that this person had raped her and that rape produced a child. It would seem unnecessary to require another proceeding to terminate their parental rights.
And, and what would be the process in which, if that individual was found later on, not to be guilty?
So if they're found not guilty in a criminal matter, they could still proceed in a civil matter, and this burden of proof is lower, so they might still be able to terminate their parental rights. You know, they might say it's not enough to convict you and send you off to jail for 15 years, but it's enough to terminate your parental rights.
So this law will allow the, the judge to render his decision on, even though he has not been convicted, and then even though later on found to be not guilty, the, the judge can still maintain his, his position, even, but then the individual would have that right to go to court to seek, you know, a turn of?
Yeah, and that's the, so the, so if the defendant was acquitted in a criminal matter, the mother of the, could still, you know, terminate parental rights, whether or not they have a right to an attorney at that point, because, you know, the right to a parent is a constitutional right. I'm not sure if, I haven't done any research as to whether or not an attorney must be appointed to represent them, like if it were in a criminal case, so.
Okay.
I hope I'm not making more work for my office, but I think we might, we might be obligated to represent some of these individuals.
Okay. Well, the other question I had, Senator Perez asked that when I was curious, because it says that in some jurisdiction, it operates automatically upon conviction, is that currently what's happening today in, in our courts? As far as like, the judge making a, a decision to take away parental rights, or it cannot be done right now at all?
No, it can't be done now unless they're able to prove they're unfit for.
Okay, so this would, would bypass all that?
Yes, it'll create another.
Layer.
Layer, or at least another grounds for terminating parental rights.
Right.
And then, you know, but it still has to be stashed by clear and convincing evidence. So if they're convicted beyond a reasonable doubt, then though, you would usually just introduce the conviction in the special proceeding, and that should be enough to meet the clear and convincing evidence standard. So hopefully, you won't have to put the victim through an additional trial.
I see. Okay, well, again, thank you so much for being here today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again, Attorney Hattori, if I could just ask you a couple of questions also. If you could provide additional information regarding how this would be affected by, or this, it would affect the stop grant to Guam?
Okay, sure.
That's a great news, I was not aware of, and so I'd, I'd welcome that. And I want to thank you for your detailed look at this bill and, and input based on your experience with many years at the Public Defender's Office. I, I wonder, I'm going to ask the Coalition again, but I would like to ask you if you know, do, does Guam have statistics that would tell us how many people on Guam are affected in this type of situation?
I could try to locate those statistics. I know that the, I mean, the, you know, Guam Police Department, they put out a citizen-centric report, and I think over the course of the last four years, much to my surprise, the number of reported incidents of, you know, rape has actually gone down. I think in 2014, there might have been 160, 2017, there were 32, and 2018, I think there were like 68? So, but the public perception is that this happens far more frequently than, you know, it seems like it's in the newspaper every day, but in reality, there's, there were really only about 68 reported incidents last, in 2018. I haven't seen the 2019 numbers. I'm not sure if GPD keeps track of how many results in the, in a childbirth, so I'm not sure where, I could try to find that.
All right. I appreciate your, your looking into that. We have also, we've also received comment from our legal bureau regarding ensuring that the evidentiary standard is consistent with other Guam law, and we will make sure that the sponsors is going to work on, a little bit on that. And they've also talked about, instead of using the term sexual assault, that we should use criminal sexual conduct and make all of our references coordinate with how they are in the code right now, so that, that, that standard or the, the elements of the crime are, are automatically available to us. But.
Yeah, that's like with Chapter 25, and that's pretty much the same thing with the next bill. We didn't submit testimony, but, you know, there's a definition for household member and family violence that you could just make apply to the, that one.
All right, okay, appreciate that. I think that's it for now, Mr. Torres, unless you have any other further comments?
Nothing further.
Senator Torres?
Thank you for the time, though.
Thank you, thank you very much. Senator Torres, you may close on the bill?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone for their comments and concerns, and what I want to reiterate too is that we, we are trending right now as the, this number two, the second highest number of sexual assaults per capita, and as Mr. Attorney Hattori reported, there were about 68 that he believes were reported out of a population of 100,000 people. But we have to note that in cases of rape, oftentimes, they are not reported. So there's, there is a, a suspicion that there are far more assaults that occur, and then when, if you consider also the degree of pregnancies amongst unmarried teenage girls, that number is also high. So that also could be tied into this, this whole concern. But more, more importantly, I think that we need to provide a remedy that doesn't exist right now in our statute to allow a parent who has been sexually assaulted and who has conceived a child as a result, to seek termination of parental rights. a child as a result, to seek termination of parental rights, if that is the choice of that victim. And, you know, the concern across the country and even in Congress is, how do we better protect victims of rape and children who are the product of rape, so that they could, they could, you know, go on with their lives without the threat and harassment of the perpetrators? So that, you know, that, I think on Guam, given our high prevalence of sexual assault and high prevalence of pregnancy in young people, that, you know, it's incumbent on us to provide these protections if those victims so choose to look for those remedies in our court system. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. There being no further testimony on this bill, we will consider the hearing on this bill, that this bill was heard, and we will move to the item number three on the agenda, which is Bill Number 123 LS, sponsored by Luis B. Munya. So I will allow the Senator to please introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Number 123 is an act to amend subsection 25 dot 15 A2 and to add a new subsection 25.10 A11 to Chapter 25 of Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to expanding the relationship provisions of first-degree criminal sexual conduct to ensure that the law applies equally to those who sexually assault children in their households. Bill 123 is introduced to fill a gap in a way sex offenders are charged who commit acts of sexual assault of children, of a child in a child's home. Homes are supposed to be safe, a safe place for children to be protected from the evils of the outside world. When someone in a position of trust is able to break that trust and bring that evil into a child's home in the form of rape, that person must be charged with the highest crime that we have for sexual assault. The current law makes it a crime of first-degree criminal sexual conduct of a member of the victim's household is related to the victim by blood or affinity. Guam law holds that definition of affinity is a relationship, of affinity is a relationship established by marriage. This bill expands the definition of affinity to include a household member's boyfriend or girlfriend. It creates a definition of dating relationship and applies only to the girlfriend or boyfriend of the household member. Madam Chair, sadly, most cases, most such cases involve the boyfriend of the victim's mother. Since these offenders are not related to the victim by blood or affinity, they cannot be convicted of a first-degree criminal sexual conduct and are charged with a third-degree criminal sexual conduct. The difference in these sentences are three to five years for the third-degree criminal sexual conduct and a minimum of 15 years for first-degree criminal sexual conduct. The bill does not apply exclusively to those who are in a dating relationship with the victim's parent. It can also apply to those in a dating relationship within anyone living in the household, like a sibling, an aunt or uncle, or even a grandparent. Madam Chair, I hope that you and the members of the committee will support this bill, and I also welcome all the suggestions. As the author of the last bill said, you know, we need to protect our children, and they deserve laws that will provide strong deterrence against those that wish to harm them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Munya. I want to note again, for the record, that the committee has requested feedback from the Attorney General of Guam, the Judiciary of Guam, the Guam Police Department, Child Protective Services, victim advocates reaching out, the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault, the Guam Public Defender Services Corporation, the Guam Bar Association, and other stakeholders on Bill Number 123-35COR. The Legislative Legal Bureau has also reviewed Bill 123 and has provided preliminary comments and recommendations for the committee to review, and we will work with the sponsor in ensuring that the bill meets our legal bureau's standards. And I would just like to comment on the, on this bill and on all the bills, really, that we've heard today, and I want to thank the sponsors of these bills, and I want to, I think that the bills show that you have given much thought, not just to the crime and the high incidence of criminal sexual conduct that is occurring on Guam, but to the victims of these crimes. And so I want to thank all of you, because it's really the victims that are the focus of these bills. We are trying to allow victims and to move on with their lives, and that we, the government, will give them every benefit that we can to do that in peace and do that in strength and to thrive. So I want to thank you for the thought that you've put into the victims and highlighting them. We're having a very difficult time here on Guam with this criminal sexual conduct, as you know, it, the high incidence, as Senator Torres pointed out, is, it's really been a burden on all of us and our families, and we're trying to take care of our children, and we just, we're just have to, gonna, we're just going to have to not give up. So I'm glad to see all of my colleagues, my female women colleagues here, Sisus Maasi, from the bottom of my heart. And as to the bill, I support this bill. I was thinking with my staff that we might look at whether, we have the formal term adoption in here, but whether we might need to include pocai or that type of arrangement also, because of they're being raised in these homes by, yeah, and we will work with the sponsor again on that. But again, is there any other comment to Senator Taitegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Madam Chair, what you said is wholeheartedly supported by, I think, everyone here today, and the comments you made. I hope the people of Guam listening this evening understand the importance of trying to incorporate laws that protect our youth, our children. And as we go through this, it's important also that we hear from the Attorney General's Office as well, and other people in the legal industry to make sure that we do this right the first time. And the only thing I would like to ask the author later on, or not now, actually, is just, is the term dating relationship as defined in Bill 123 adequate enough? Because if you look at the definition of dating relationship, it means frequent inmate association, primary characterization, by the exception of affectional involvement. Are there any suggestions to either narrow or broaden the definition is a concern? So I'm hoping to work with the author of the bill to zero in on that particular dating relationship meaning here, to make it stronger. But again, I thank you for the opportunity and look forward to supporting this bill on the floor.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Taitegui, any other comments from the panel? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a brief comment, I just want to thank my colleagues for their initiative and their work in putting these bills together. And I do want to, you know, look at this closely and support the work and behalf of the victims, so thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Torres, you're recognized.
I just wanted to express my support for this, and the other thought on the definition of dating, I think many of us have the first impression of what we term on Guam, common law relationships, so whether that's not necessary or maybe further clarified, because oftentimes, common law has some implied semi-legal kind of status, and maybe then that, but that's just food for thought, and it was just a passing thought I thought I'd bring up. Thank you.
Thank you all for your excellent suggestions. Senator Luis, you may close on this bill.
Thank you, thank you so much, and I appreciate the input and the support, of course. I mean, it really is all about the children, and I had this discussion too with legal and even within my staff about utilizing the terms common law, because in the community, everyone knows what a common law is. Your common law, because you're staying together and you have a relationship with each other within that household. But unfortunately, I was advised that it was not something that we can use in this language pertaining to law. So, yeah, you know, we can work with that and see how we can minimize it to where it's understood that that's what that particular relationship is, with, between two people within a household. And I think in the title, it does say, within their household, so I think it just kind of defines what a dating relationship is within two people under one roof.
Thank you, Senator, and I think legally, there is no such definition anyways, but in practice, oftentimes it entitles them to certain benefits.
Benefits, right.
Yeah, and so I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, again, Sisus Maasi to each of my colleagues and to all of you who are tuning into this. There being no additional individuals to present further testimony, the public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 6:07 PM. Sisus Maasi.